Let the record show at six o'clock, we'll call our meeting to order. Sarah, will you please do the roll call?
Eddie Goffin, Linda Barnmark.
President.
Eric Goff.
Here.
The Kenan Morton.
Present.
Tim Lewis.
Present.
Daniel Dan.
Michael Bush.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum, thank you. Approval of the agenda, and it's a rather lengthy agenda because of the holiday. We did not have our first meeting in July, so everything is clumped into tonight's meeting. So your patience is greatly appreciated.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Lewis to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Motion passed. Do we have anyone that signed up to speak under the open governmental? Okay. I'm sorry? Do you want to speak regarding a project, or do you want to speak regarding something else?
I'm sorry, I can't.
Well, come up front, and then you could hear me maybe.
I'm going to speak on the dollar.
Okay, that's on the agenda, that's whenever you'll have time to speak. Is this microphone working? All right. There's no one to speak under the open governmental process. Approval of the meeting minutes?
With approval.
I have a motion by Mr. Goff, and second by Mr. Truitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we have a number of public hearings this evening. We will ask that you come forward whenever it's your turn to speak, or whenever you want to speak to a particular project. We'll ask that you state your name, your address, and your comments. And we would ask, since there's quite a few people here, and the agenda's very lengthy, that you don't repeat over and over the same item, if you understand what I mean. Okay? Green, Project Green.
Yes, the first public hearing tonight is a request for sketch plan advancement. The project is Project Green, filed 2304-145. The developer is Water Garden Farms, and the engineer is Greenway Engineering. It's located in the Arden District, Tax Map 15, Parcel 24, and is located approximately 2,700 feet from the intersection of Winchester Avenue and Novak Drive, on the south side of Novak Drive. The developer is proposing a 70,306 square foot state-of-the-art hydroponic greenhouse on 25 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On June 2nd, 2023, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Hi, Brooke Perry, Greenway Engineering.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing, it's your opportunity to make your comments known regarding this project. Again, ask that you come forward, state your name, your address, and any comments you might have.
There is no one, I move to close public hearing.
Second.
Let the record show that there is no comments. I have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gokenhour, to close the public hearing. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of the representative or of the staff?
Okay, now ma'am, I make the motion, we accept staff recommendation for advancement of sketch plan to preliminary plan.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Lewis, to move the project forward. I do have a question. The hydroponics. Do you know what kind of hydroponics they're going to grow yet?
Yeah, so it's proposed to be baby of lettuce.
Uh huh.
Just one product.
Yeah, we have, we have a good hydroponic source for lettuce already in Berkeley County, and it is quite nice stuff, I will tell you that. We're using it in some of the county programs already, it's good stuff. Okay, again, I have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Lewis. No further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. The next public hearing is Five Star Auto Spa.
This public hearing is also a request for sketch plan advancement. The project is Five Star Auto Spa, filed 2303-112. The developer is Five Henall LLC, and the engineer is JHA Companies. It's located in the Arden District, Tax Map 5G, Parcels 26 through 31. This site's located at 1111 Winchester Avenue, at the intersection of Apple Harvest Drive and Winchester Avenue. This project proposes a 7,000-square-foot car wash and approximately 10,290-square-foot vacuum enclosure on 1.09 acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the June 5th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Section 802.1. B. I. A. of the subdivision ordinance requiring a 25-foot buffer between commercial and residential uses. On May 11th, 2023, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Joe Hague, with JJ Companies.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing, opportunity to make your questions and comments for this project.
My name's Stephen Lemay, address is 319 Burneese Avenue. I have a big concern about this facility. If you've been through that intersection, you know it's a mess. It's a mess right now. The only savior's been the bank closing, and even when it was open, the business was very slow. Adding a facility this big in that intersection's going to cause you future problems, in my opinion. So I think it should be considered how big it is, and the grass and regresse out of the facility. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak regarding the Five Star Auto Spa?
There is no one else, I move public hearing to be closed.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close the public hearing. So the second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. Are there any questions, Planning Commission members, before we close the public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of the representative regarding Mr. Lemay's concerns?
I was just looking at the sketch, and it appears as if there's a right turn only on that exit on Route 45, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, I would think that on that same entrance, turning in there, I don't, I can't tell exactly how wide that intersection is turning, turning in there, but with the amount of traffic that does come through there, is there sufficient room for vehicles to safely turn in there and not back traffic up?
Yes. I mean, we've shown this to DOH as well, we're working with them to get this sketch plan.
I believe DOH requested that they bring the right turn lane back all the way.
They did, we asked the applicant to do that in their hood, or DOHS for that as well, to pull the dedicated right turn lane back as far as possible, which they have done. I mean, we've worked with, we consulted with DOH, went back and forth, and DOH did not request a traffic study, did, other than pulling the right turn lane back, DOH did not have any issue.
Mr. Lemay, are you hearing this?
Yeah, can I speak?
Well, the public hearing's closed, but go ahead and make your comments.
Well, the issue is, unless you live over there, you don't have any idea what happens at that intersection. And I guarantee if you go right now, you're making, if you're coming up 45, or actually Winchester Avenue, going towards 81, you gotta sit there for like three or four lights. That's on the other side, and when you get in there, you end up getting stuck in the middle of the intersection, constantly.
I hear what you're saying, and I think this panel hears what you're saying, because we've all experienced it. However, when we went to the Highway Department, they only required this, right turn lane, and if they approve it, this body can only deny it based on their assumptions. So, we, it would be up to the Planning Commission members to either accept the staff recommendation to approve it, or to deny the staff recommendation. Do you have any further questions?
No ma'am.
Anybody else have questions regarding?
Yes ma'am, President. At the waiver stage, there was some conversation on behalf of the developer, that there would be a voluntary obligation to have some sort of attendant at the entrance, that once the wait lines were at capacity, that cars would be waved on. Have any of those discussions been continued with this project?
I can answer that if you would. We've worked out with them, that's why this plan is definitely a result of the waiver plan. We had them have posted bail after to get around this, and that people could get out without having to have the attendant there. We limited that to one-way access now for out. So, that kind of negated the whole thing for having the attendant there. They have more queuing, and they also have a dedicated bailout thing, which they never had, which basically you were stuck in, stuck there. So that's why, if someone does need to go that way, they can get in.
Thank you.
So, it took a decent attention of that.
And Doug, what I see there, you, just in this sketch alone, there's space there for 21 cars, according to what was spacked out on the sheet.
Right, they have more cars, and what they are required to have are the ordinance for ordering and queuing to the car wash itself. We treated it as a fast food operation, for lack of better, you know, comparisons. However, the applicant said they needed more cars, and they're, they're showing us this, that this is the stacking and queuing that they need. So, it, it does remain on the line, it still complies with the ordinance, it's not following, in other words, the way the ordinance reached for stacking and queuing is, it should not migrate itself back out into the street to cause other reasons. It doesn't. They definitely beat the ordinance, which is only three and five, three at the order, three at this window, five at the, at the ordering station, so it definitely meets those criteria. They did add more stacking and queuing with the van ramping, so we feel it's much better than what we ever saw in this sketch.
Mr. Lemay, did you get an opportunity to see the sketch plan?
No, I have not, actually.
Okay.
Is there one available?
Uh, yeah, Sarah. That might better help you understand the design process. Okay, Planning Commission members, are there any further questions? I'm ready for a motion.
Yes, may I make the motion, we accept staff recommendation on a sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to move it forward to the preliminary plan stage. Are there any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have opposition? Okay, let the record show that there's one. No, by Mr. Truitt. The motion passed. Okay, the next public hearing is Dollar General, Glengarry.
Yes, this is a public hearing for sketch plan advancement. The project is Dollar General Glengarry, filed 2302-038. The developer is AR Development LLC, and the engineer is Frasher Group. It's located in the Jaredstown District, Tax Map 30, Parcel 12, and is located approximately 0.14 miles east of Back Creek Valley Road along Apple Harvest Drive. This project proposes a 12,480-square-foot Dollar General on two acres to be served by private well and septic. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On June 6th, 2023, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Okay, this is a public hearing for the Dollar General store. Now's your opportunity to come forward and make your comments, please. That's okay, that's okay. We're very patient.
And like I knew, I'm going to read my statement, if that's okay.
Okay, you want to give us, give us your name and your address for the record?
Yes ma'am, my name's Lisa Dunham, I live at 3790 Apple Harvest Drive in Glengarry. Okay? Good evening. 229 years ago, Samuel Dunham purchased land in Back Creek Valley. Tonight, I stand here a proud seventh-generation Valley Dunham. I currently live on the property my parents purchased in 1960, property that parallels Route 45 and is just a few hundred yards from the proposed site of this Dollar General. I've come tonight to wave some warning flags, as you can see. While Back Creek Valley and its small towns are part of Berkeley County, it is also an entity to itself. When you leave the hustle and bustle of Spring Mills and Martinsburg and Inwood, and you top the mountain, the air's even different. Hopefully, I won't get emotional. As you descend and you gaze on the scenery, you may not realize, but you're viewing three counties and two states. You're entering an area where families like mine have lived for generations. Many properties are owned today by children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. It's an area that has seen a lot of growth, but the growth has been family dwellings. Folks tired of cookie-cutter developments and postage-stamped their yards for their children are looking for respite. Folks that live in the valley aren't seeking corporate convenience. That's my first warning flag. A warning against convenience, such a nice word, but it exacts a high price. The price of farmlands, countryside, the price of peace and quiet, the price of dark nights that allow you to view starry skies and lightning bugs, a price that will demand 364 days a year, 12 hours a day of our life. This store will be open 364 days a year, 12 hours a day. All this for the sake of a 10-minute drive to Inwood. In the 23 years since Glengarry Grocery has been closed, I've not heard of a single life being ruined by inconvenience. What I have witnessed firsthand is the proverbial floodgates that open in the communities once a corporation gets a foothold. Especially a corporation with documented, not just my say, but documented OSHA violations, penalties and fines lodged against them, and poor management. Sadly, all this in the name of convenience. Corporations have gotten richer and people have gotten poorer. The second flag I'd like to wave is the flag of traffic safety. Route 45 has seen a huge increase in traffic, an increase that's sure to grow, as folks who currently don't travel our stretch of road will begin doing so for convenience sake. Living at the intersection of Route 45 and 7, like I do, I see and hear near misses almost daily. I've seen wrangled, mangled cars and injured people, and each time, I'm thankful there hasn't been a fatality there yet. But it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. As I understand the proposed sketch, the only plan for traffic issues in that area is a turn lane to be put in. A turn lane at the entrance of the store, just a few hundred yards from a hazardous intersection of 45 and Route 7. An entrance where the speed limit is going to be 40 miles an hour, it already is, and very few people obey it. I wish I could truly convey with words just how dangerous the intersection of 45 and 7 is becoming, and will become even worse if this store isn't put in place without any changes to the traffic situation. Commissioners, I have a genuine concern for the safety of my family and friends, should you choose to approve this structure without addressing the unmonitored speeding and the unsafe intersection, people's safety will be endangered. So I stand here with a warning flag, in so doing, I'm making you accountable. You can no longer arbitrarily approve these plans based on apartment highways and all the others, without knowing that there is an issue there that is seen daily by the residents. I was told I'd be wasting my time tonight, that this is a done deal. I guess I still hold out hope that citizens can make a difference. However, if those folks that told me that are correct, I know this, I've done what I believe God wanted me to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. No, 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 no. No, no, no. We don't need that, we have agenda to get through. We appreciate your comments, Mrs. Dunham, and we'll ask for the next person to come forward.
James Hume, 217 Investigate Lane, Headless Hill.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
James Hume.
Okay.
I live by the elementary school. I'm also against, we do not need a Dollar General in the valley. We do not need the corporate, right now, the Glengarry store is for sale, I would like to see somebody reopen it, if a corporate comes out there, that will never happen. The Shainhor store is also empty, and once again, if a corporate comes out there, we will never have those reopened. And we also do not need the traffic, and the lights, the, they, if they do approve, the lights should be turned off, all the lights, as soon as they close the store. There should not be any lights on, ruining our night sky.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anyone else wish to speak? Now's your opportunity to please come forward, make your comments known regarding the Dollar General store.
If there is no one else.
Okay, there appears to be no one else, I have a motion.
Close the public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Goff to close the public hearing. Second by Mr. Truitt. Are there any questions, Planning Commission members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, how about you? Do you have questions of the staff, or of the representative?
Please, Brad Muster with Frasher.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
I was wondering whether you were going to get somebody from Frasher.
I'm Andy Hay, make your name.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have questions of the applicant's representative, or of the staff?
I have questions in reference to the turn lane. Is that something that the traffic study or DOH, I know it's not in this, you know, sketch plan, but is that something that's in the plan, highway plan?
We will, we will submit the plan once we get it on the entrance to the DOH, but as of now, our conversations with them, they did not require any kind of prior improvements to the Apple Harvest Drive.
Do you want to repeat that again, they have not made any indication? They had, had anything?
They did not.
I traveled over there last week, just to be, so that I knew exactly where the site was, and, you know, it, it is, I think, as Commissioner Lewis said, about 700 feet east of Route 7, but there is clear sight there. You know, there's clear sight distance both directions. You know, I, I think, like anybody else, probably more concerned about somebody slowing down, waiting on traffic to turn in to that, to the store, or sitting there waiting on traffic to pass. So, that's, that's my concern, for sure, is, would be requesting of a turn lane to be able to protect the folks sitting there and allow the motoring traffic to continue, because I know that traffic flies when they get an opportunity, you know, coming out of the mountain, they let it roll, I know that.
Yeah, when I drove by the site, they definitely fly in that area, there's weird group of questions about that. Can we address the turn lane in the preliminary plan?
Yeah, it, yeah, and that's, this, this is not part of your sketch plan, you know, I get it, you know, so, I mean, the site itself has got, it's got good visibility both ways, you know.
Yeah, it's kind of at the entrance.
That's all, I've got.
Well, this is a sketch plan, nothing formal has been submitted yet, that I understand, and they have met the criteria of the sketch plan requirements. So, Planning Commission members, it's up to you to make a decision based on what you heard this evening, to either approve the project as the staff is recommending, or to deny the project.
I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendation in, for advancement of sketch plan to the preliminary plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second? I have a second by Mr. Bush. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, let me see, a show of hands for the yes. Just one now. Okay, let the record show that Mr. Lewis has a no vote, the motion passed. Okay, the next public hearing is Lightdale Apartments.
Yes, this is a public hearing for a request for sketch plan advancement. The project is Lightdale Apartments, filed 2304-124. The developer is HWA Enterprises, and the engineer is Valley Engineering. It's located in the Apeken District, Tax Map 6M, Parcel 31. The site's located at the intersection of Williamsport Pike and Rudolph Court, approximately 570 feet south of the Berkeley Station Road and Williamsport Pike intersection. This project proposes an apartment complex with 72 units on approximately 3.6 acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the June 5th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Section 801 of the subdivision ordinance, requiring 2.5 spaces per apartment unit, plus one parking space for onsite employee, plus 10% additional spaces for guests. On June 23rd, 2023, the County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval stating that a review of the above-mentioned project was completed, he found to be in compliance with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Hello, my name's Eric George, with Valley Engineering, you're the design team.
Did you say your last name, Mr. George?
A George, G. E. R. D.
Okay, this is a public hearing, your opportunity to make your comments known. Ask that you come forward and do that at this time.
If there is no one, I move to close public hearing.
Let the record show that there is no one to speak from the public. I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close the public hearing, second by Mr. Lewis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Any question I would add, which I asked last night, since these are apartments, not single-family homes. When your sketch plan, where you had your parking, I asked them last time about this year about anybody that has an electric car, they'll be able to plug in anywhere since it's apartments and not single-family homes. And since, in some cases, that's what people are buying now, and I approve, whether they plug in charging cars since this is an apartment.
Yeah, electric charging stations are just like any other entity that developers provide, so it's, there may or may not, but there's no plan to do it right now.
When you get, my number is anytime you go with 50 apartments, you go into 75, 100 apartments, then you need to have at least, you know, two charging stations there for the people there. They're going to be buying apartments or renting apartments that have space to charge. Otherwise, they're going to, you know, you're going to get your car charged by sleeping. Most people just keep their mind and you can ask. I, my recommendation is when you build these apartments, single-family homes, they got one apartments and then you're looking at numbers over 50. And I know, I talked to Doug about this before, there's nothing in the ordinance today for it, but that, that electric cars are bringing in this country whether we like it or not, and we need to have, should establish at least one or two spots when it comes to apartments. And that's, that's the only thing I'm going to, I'm going to stick my foot on this and disagree with that, if we can't get that, at least a couple stations.
My name's William Akins. I'm the developer for the project. We currently have apartment complexes in West Virginia and Virginia. At this present time, we have no electric car charging stations in any of our properties.
Have you looked at the numbers of growth of cars?
Yes, sir.
Since you built, since those were built?
Yes, sir, we have.
Really are today?
Well, we actually just opened up one in Winchester, Virginia. We're making appropriations to be able to plan for the future, to be able to allow for charging in the future, but by stubbing conduits out of transformers and things of that nature, be able to plan for those things. We're happy to do those type things, but until the demand is there and the requests from the tenants are there, we're not making, we're not, we're not doing for those types, those things. But we are planning for the future and making stubouts for the future, for future.
Future's here. Future's here.
Do we have any dollar figure what a charging station might cost?
The problem you got with charging stations and where it has is, as the gentleman says, your transformer and your loads are different. Like going into that apartment, being an engineer, you tell you, your substations and delivery stations have to be able to take that draw. So it is a, it is a big investment for a little bit of return of what the builder's going to get back out of that, so.
We need at least two delivery rates of services, that's.
It's convenience services, all those.
I, I understand that, but I'm just curious, is there anybody who knows a dollar figure?
I would say between $5,000 and $7,000 per charging station.
Is that right?
Thereabouts, to be able to make appropriations per charging station. So that's why I'm saying that we can certainly make the stubs out there, but until we have a demand request, it's something we generally are not doing.
So, so for my clarification, the station itself is about $5,000 to $7,000, right? Is that what you're saying? But then you're saying the power to support that charging station is what is really needed?
The PL is going to have, be able to support our going to the charging station in the complex.
Is there, is there a dollar figure of that, or is it, is that something over and above? I think I have a, Brooke back here may have some answers for us.
So we're looking at a project in Morgan County where we actually are having E D chargers. And so it's not so much a costly station itself, but the type of battery you're going to have to store the power itself, whether you're going to do a supercharger station or something more simple. And those supercharger stations, they do it very quickly. They're like a gas pump of charging stations potentially. But really, our infrastructure that the Edison provides us isn't there yet, so the costly developer is more of a burden right now if they're not getting direct requests for it.
Yeah, you know, I, I see the sheet store out there on Edmund Miller Boulevard, they must have five charging stations there. And, huh?
I was speaking to you.
Yeah, yeah. And then there's a couple at the grocery store. It's, I, I'm kind of getting on that boat with you. I think they are going to be more in demand, and you're saying that you're open to it when the demand is there for your clients.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just as long as we put all that out there. Okay, is there any other questions?
Yes, ma'am, I've got a couple. Previously, I spoke about the turn lanes coming in with aerial device, fire department aerial device, means these are three-story structures that would require, were you able to run that program?
Yes.
To make sure that they can get their equipment in there okay?
Yeah, so they would use that one lane as a lane that comes in, circulate throughout far away, turn and come back out.
All right, and the other thing is, and I, I probably doesn't even apply to sketch plan, but I know that that area is prone to flooding, and, you know, honestly, you can't, you can't put one more drop of water in that area when we have severe rain. So I just want to make sure that we're in good shape with our stormwater management, that, I mean, I know currently there's nothing there, and everything that sheds completely off of there now, and hopefully the engineering would design it where it would release itself, you know, appropriately, instead of just one sheet running off.
Yeah, we are aware of the issues. We have, there's a box, the parking lot is going to faint, but it's an underground retention system that we are looking at. It leads to levels further. A lot of the issues now are actually in Rudolph Court, will be proven at, there's a lot of potholes and a lot of, there's, that'll all be filled up, perfect gutter on the side of the project.
You could probably save a couple of those potholes for your stormwater management.
We joke in the office, we actually got stuck in the road for seven days. Real rough.
Okay, if there's no further questions, then I'm ready for a motion.
Yes, ma'am. Make a motion, we accept staff recommendation to advancement of sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
I have a motion by Mr. Gopinhour, a second by Mr. Goff, to move the project forward to the preliminary plan stage. Are there any additional questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, let the record show there's one no by Mr. Truitt, and I'm assuming that you're concerned about the.
Nothing else, still Rudolph.
Okay. Okay, the motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next public hearing is Caliber Collision.
Yes, this is a public hearing for requests for sketch plan advancement. The project is Caliber Collision, filed 2302-055. The developer is Brett Florrie and the engineers Frayland and Kaufman, Inc. It's located in the Apeken District, Tax Map 6, Parcel 13.8, and is located at 925 Mid-Atlantic Parkway, approximately 950 feet west of Williamsport Pike. This project proposes a 15,423 square foot auto body paint and repair shop on approximately 2.4 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On June 23, 2023, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
My name is Melissa Hernandez, 2019 Knights Court, Allen, Texas. As you may already know, Alber collision is one of the biggest collision centers in the nation with over 1,300 locations, and we are very excited to work with you on this opportunity, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Your opportunity to make your comments known regarding this project.
If there is no one, I move to close public hearing.
Okay, let the record show that there's no one to speak regarding Caliber Collision. I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close the public hearing. Second by Mr. Truitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of the applicant's representative or of the staff?
I can't really tell from this sketch, is this a new structure or is this an existing structure?
It's an existing structure.
Okay, so this is the property to the west side of Al's Body Shop currently? Is that correct?
I think so, yeah, I believe, yeah.
Okay. And once again, because of the area that is prone to flooding, are we, are we good with the stormwater management?
Yes, we have approved that, yes.
Okay, because that, that area has a history with flooding and what, stays there. I know there's some pretty good-sized retention ponds on the border, on the edge of that property, at least on the east side of it. I don't, I can't remember anything to the west side.
I think one of those is getting refurbished, used to the E D S or great program.
Okay.
I believe.
All right, any other questions, Planning Commission members? If there's no further questions, I'm ready for a motion.
Yes, ma'am. Make a motion, we accept staff recommendation for the advancement of sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
I have a motion by Mr. Gopinhour to move the project forward.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goff. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the next public hearing is Robert Lee Elliott. Request for waiver.
Yes, this is a public hearing for request for waiver. The project is Robert Lee Elliott, filed 2305-192. The developer is Robert Lee Elliott and the surveyor is DeMagno Consulting, Inc. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Tax Map 13, Parcel 13. The site's located on Knight Town Road, approximately 0.3 mile west of St. Andrews Drive. This project proposes the creation of a 1.46 acre residential parcel with a 26 acre residue. The proposed residential parcel already has a single-family residence and is served by public, public water and sewer. The developer's requesting a waiver to Section 302.2.2(c)(1), requiring a family transfer plaque to be transferred to an immediate family member. By definition, immediate family members are considered grandparents, parents, spouse, children, grandchildren, and siblings. Since the mobile home on the property is currently served by public water and sewer, and the property was intended to be sold to the applicant's brother before he passed away, staff recommends approval of the waiver to Section 302.2(c)(1) to allow the applicant to create a lot for his nephew.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Yes, Andy DeMagno.
Been a long time since we've seen you.
I forgot one, I think. I missed one.
Oh, okay. Again, is this a public hearing? Questions or comments at this time for this project, please?
If there is no one, I move to close public hearing.
Okay, let the record show that there is no one to speak from the public. I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close public hearing. Second by Mr. Lewis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. DeMagno or the staff?
Yes, ma'am, President. Mine's more just of a comment. I don't have any intention of opposing this in any way, just as a matter of a comment for the family transfer. There are other avenues to take in achieving the same result, which is why I'm not opposing it, but I would just caution the commission to avoid, you know, creeping the definition of family transfer beyond what's specifically included in the regulations. And, and I would further ask that if there is a motion in support of advancing this plan that is specifically approved, the easement that's contemplated for this parcel, I believe that to be a separate item that the commission would need to approve.
Okay, any other questions about the council? Do you have anything you want to add to it?
No.
Okay.
So Andy, what's your proposal? Does, does that include the easement?
Well, includes part of the easement up to a certain part, and then it becomes his lot.
Okay.
I don't know what the actual distance is. Or?
212 feet.
Yeah, I have, I have no problem with this. I actually, well, this is conflict or not, but I actually know the gentleman that passed. Pretty confident of the intent, and it is, does remain with family, so I know that being a nephew, it does stretch that regulation a little bit, but the death of his father was somewhat untimely, and I would support that request.
Is that a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a motion by Mr. Gopinhour to support the staff's recommendation. Second by Mr. Goff. Are there any additional questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have a motion. Thank you. Okay, the next item for a public hearing, which is our last public hearing, is Appalachian Heating and Air.
Yes, this is a public hearing for request for waiver. The project is Appalachian Heating and Air. The file is 2305-182, and the developer is Appalachian Heating and Air and the engineer is Greenway Engineering. It's located in the Mill Creek District, Tax Map 3, Parcel 26, and is located on Arden Knollville Road, approximately 0.71 miles northeast of its intersection with Jaredstown Road. The developer is proposing the relocation of Appalachian Heating and Air to the project site. The parcel is approximately 1.11 acres and proposed utilities are unknown at the time. The developer's requesting a waiver to Article 5, Section 503B, Table 5-2 of the Berkeley County Subdivision Ordinance, requiring a 50-foot front setback for commercial projects fronting a collector roadway. The developer previously requested a waiver for a reduction from a 50-foot front setback to a 15-foot front setback, which was denied at the December 5, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. Since then, the developer submitted a sketch plan which shows a 25-foot front setback. The Stonely Homeowners Association, which is directly across Arden Knollville Road from the site, has provided a letter of support for the developer's proposed layout. If the developer is not successful in obtaining a front setback reduction, then the building will need to be two stories. This would create an obstruction in the view of, for the Stonely neighborhood, as well as an increased impervious area. Since the Stonely neighborhood is in, is supportive of the proposed site layout and the site's potential impervious area would be reduced, staff recommends approval of the waiver to Article 5, Section 503B, Table 5-2 of the Berkeley County Subdivision Ordinance, reducing the required front setback from 50 feet to 25 feet.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project? Carrie, Greenway Engineering. Thank you. This is a public hearing. I do have a letter here that has been given to us this evening. I'll read it into the record. This letter pertains to the waiver that Appalachian Heating, 2305-182, is applying for, for their lot on Arden Knollville Road in Enwood, West Virginia. is applying for, for their lot on Arden Knollville Road in Enwood, West Virginia. The Stonely Homeowners Board has reviewed their plans for the structure that they have proposed to build on the lot. The board has given their approval of the building if they follow the plans that they submitted to the board, which includes no less than twenty-five foot setback from Arden Knollville Road. The board requests that the property be maintained in a way that does not degrade our community and that the commercial dumpster is not visible from Arden Knollville Road. Do we have anyone to speak regarding this project?
There is no one to move to close public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Goff and I think it's second by Mr. Truitt to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Ms. Perry or of the staff?
I don't really have anything, ma'am. Other than, it's an odd shape of parcel to try and get the maximum use out of it. You know, it looks as if they've been a little creative in their step down of the structures and to be able to maintain everything on that property. And I applaud them for reaching out to the neighborhood. Even though it's not part of Stonely, it is part of the neighborhood. I think that they've tried to work with them to accommodate them and get what they need also.
What about the request about the dumpster? The dumpster?
So it has always been proposed that it would be at the rear of the parcel, at least in our preferred layout. So some of the layouts didn't have it back there because it was requiring a one-way lane to be able to kind of squeeze everything into that parcel. So what we, with this setback waiver request, we would be able to put that dumpster at the rear where it's adjoining the I eighty-one right of way.
Okay, so it will not be visible from?
We also require screening.
Yeah, we would have required screening anyways.
And it will be screened, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Perry, one of the aspects of a waiver would be public health, safety, welfare. Seems to be that the setback off a major road, semi-major road, is kind of squarely within that safety aspect where, you know, cars are coming down here at a decent rate of speed and, you know, maybe twenty-five, an extra twenty-five feet would make the difference for running into the building or not. Have there been any discussions in either internally or with staff about different safety devices or ditches or types of screening or things that would help alleviate any of those concerns?
It's definitely been thought about. So that, the parcel actually sits lower than the existing roadway, so that's one thing right there. Part of that road classification that sets the setback is the average daily trip count. So for this road, the average daily trip count is between seventeen fifty and five thousand. So Arden Knollville itself is estimated to have twenty-nine hundred. So it's on the lower end of that spectrum. And that's kind of where we feel that this middle ground is what's appropriate, especially because the classification below this, it's only a five foot setback. So it is a significantly larger setback than lower classification, but it's just not quite there to what we're seeing with this. And being that it is so close to the intersection, we believe that, you know, traffic should be slowing at that point anyway. Again, this is just the waiver and sketch plan stage, so it has not been submitted for DOH review yet, but that will be part of the preliminary plan stage should it advance.
DOH, we can't fill up any installation. The bottom line here. Since there's problems that could be a traffic step in the order here.
We are considering to voluntarily provide some landscaping there. So as a visual buffer, but that would also provide a little bit of physical buffer between the building if that's a concern.
And just a question for staff, council, you. What, after granting the waiver, if the agreement has changed in layout, less impervious surface because it's a one-story building, what sort of the hook that prevents this from being a two-story building later on down the line?
They don't want to go to two-story. That is a worst-case scenario for them, for the type of machinery that they're going to be having in this facility. It's very heavy. So it really limits the space that they can use. They'd have to have all of that on the first floor anyway, which is why, you know, we really want to maximize that first floor footprint.
Would you have to give a key notice about originally what it was? We asked that question. You have a special sheet builder sheet, ease purchase of certain old sheeting for HVAC. It won't fit, if we shrink the building anymore, it won't fit. So the whole purpose of trying to do this is completely, you know, not there. They got a certain size. We tried to push it to three, to try to make one. That was the whole reason why the waiver is really here. We couldn't get him to, there was no other way around it.
And there is a major concern of the Stonely neighborhood that it would be two-story. That's something they would have been adamantly opposed to.
Any noise concerns? From the big, heavy machinery now that we're talking about that?
You know, it's mainly for, if this HVAC does this, it's mainly the bulk of the storage for units, equipment, tools, supplies. Rest of this is all contained inside. It's not going to be any large shop doors that we never will get in any of the shop doors. Are there, they're in back.
Yes, there are shop doors proposed around the top of the facility.
He's getting a special, to make fluid, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so I guess, at least with, you know, some unofficial, you know, at least desire to increase screening on the roadside, especially in consideration of Stonely's, you know, outreach and support of the project, I would encourage the developer to think about that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no further questions, I'll have a motion.
Motion to second. Waiver. Please move forward on the staff's. Sketch plan. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Truitt, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant the waiver exception and to move the project forward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that concludes our public hearings for this evening. We have some preliminary plan approvals and some preliminary final plot approvals. And along with some final plot determination. Like I said, it was a big agenda, so keep rolling. PLK Enwood.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary plan approval. The project is PLK Enwood, filed twenty-three oh one dash zero two four. The developer's Enwood Chicken and the engineer is Gateway Engineers, Inc. It's located in the Mill Creek District, tax map six, parcel fifty-five point four. This site's located at the intersection of Winchester Avenue and Jarrettstown Road at the northeastern corner of Toroso Way and Lavardi Way within Butler's Crossing Commercial. This project proposes a two thousand three hundred and fifty square foot fast food restaurant on one point zero six acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plan.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Hi, I'm Ryan Enoch with Gateway Engineering.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of the representative or of the staff? Enwood Chicken. What's that name?
That's the LLC developer. It'll be Popeyes.
Popeyes.
There's no, there's no chickens in Enwood. I know, I know the people that have chickens.
Well, you know, if it would turn out to be a Chick-fil-A, it would lessen the traffic.
You ready for a motion, ma'am?
I'm ready, yeah. We'll debate the tastiness of the.
Okay, I make a motion, we accept staff recommendation for approval of the preliminary plan.
Motion by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Lewis, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to approve the preliminary final plan, no, the final, preliminary plan, sorry. Are there any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You got it.
I'll sing the jingle later.
Do what?
I'll sing the jingle later.
Oh, okay. The Popeye jingle? Is there a Popeye jingle?
I'm singing for Doug.
Huh?
I sang it already for Doug.
Oh, okay.
The next project is a request for preliminary plan approval as well. The project is Vision Group Ventures, filed twenty-two twelve dash three eighty-two. The developer is Vision Group Ventures and the engineer is Frederick Cyberton Associates. It's located in the Apeken Tax District, map two, parcel twenty point three. This site's located at the southwest corner of the intersection of GM Access Road and Caperton Boulevard. This project proposes a one hundred and nine thousand two hundred square foot warehouse on approximately seventeen point four acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On June sixth, two thousand twenty-three, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with subdivision ordinance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plan.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening, H. Schreiber with Frederick Cybert Associates.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Schreiber or of the staff? If there are none, ready for a motion.
Make a motion, we accept staff recommendations for approval of the preliminary plan.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to approve the preliminary plan for Vision Group Ventures. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Yep, thank you. The next preliminary final plot, Aspen West.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary final plot approval. The project is Aspen West. The file number is twenty-three oh six two twelve. The developer is Aspen West LLC. The surveyor is Alpha Associates. Located in the Hedgesville District, map forty-one, parcel forty-five. The project is located on Tavern Road, fifteen hundred feet east from the intersection of Tavern Road and Rock Cliff Drive. The project consists of three point zero two five two acre existing lot, which is Frontier Communications, and a two point four nine two seven residue to be served by public water and sewer. On June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance two thousand nine. The project is found to be complete, in compliance with the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plot.
Do we have anyone to represent Aspen West?
David Costello with Alpha Associates.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Costello or the staff?
David? I can't really tell by looking at this plat, what exactly are you doing there?
So there's an existing structure there? And essentially, we're separating the existing structure onto its own parcel, leaving the remainder undeveloped portion as a residue.
It looked too simple for that. Thank you.
There are no further questions, we're ready for a motion.
Make a motion, we accept staff recommendations for approval of the preliminary final plot.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to approve the preliminary final plot for Aspen West. Are there any further questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Thank you.
The next item for preliminary final plot is one nineteen Kitchen Orchard Road.
This is a request for preliminary final plot approval. The project is one nineteen Kitchen Orchard Road subdivision. The file number is twenty-two oh eight dash two three six. The developer is Stewart BV Properties LLC. The surveyor is Site Planning, Design and Survey, Falling Waters District, map nine, parcel nineteen. The project is located six hundred seventy-five feet east of the intersection of Coontown Road on the north side of Kitchen Orchard Road. The project proposes the creation of one, one point three eight residential lot and a three point six two acre residue to be served by private well and septic. Excuse me. On September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the developer was granted a waiver to section three oh five point four point one of the subdivision ordinance two thousand nine, requiring a two acre minimum lot size in order to proceed through the preliminary final plot process. On July tenth, two thousand twenty-three, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The project is found to be in compliance with the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plot.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Dan Llewellyn, Slate Planning Services.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Llewellyn or of the staff?
You've got Health Department approval on these, correct? And I see where you've located the subject reserve area. You've identified that and the existing wells. Appropriately, correct?
Yes, it's in the river.
Yes, ready for motion.
Ready for a motion.
Make a motion, we accept staff recommendations for approval of the preliminary final plot.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Truitt, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to approve the preliminary final plot for one nineteen Kitchen Orchard Road subdivision. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion pass. The next item for preliminary final plot is Kimberly Dodd.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary final plot approval. The project is Kimberly Dodd, Rhubuck Road. The file number is twenty-two oh nine dash two seven seven tied to twenty-two oh nine dash two seven two. The developer is Victor Ebersol. Surveyor is Greenway Engineering. It's in the Mill Creek District, map seventeen, parcel sixty-four. The project is located a half mile from Rhubuck Road. The project proposes the creation of one eight point two seven acre residential lot and a fourteen point six six acre residue to be served by private well and septic. On November seventh, two thousand twenty-two, the developer was granted a waiver to section three oh five point four point one of the subdivision ordinance two thousand nine, requiring frontage on a West Virginia DOH road in order to proceed through the preliminary final plot process. On July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The project is found to be in compliance with the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plot.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Perry, Greenway Engineering.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Ms. Perry or of the staff?
Isn't Rhubuck Road in Frederick County?
It is, yes. So the parcel is technically landlocked in West Virginia and the only access is to Frederick County.
And Rhubuck Road is a state-maintained road in Virginia?
It is.
Ready for a motion, ma'am?
I am.
Make a motion, we accept staff recommendation for the approval of the preliminary final.
I have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Lewis, to accept staff recommendation. I have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Lewis to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant preliminary final plat to Kimberly Dodd, Rhubuck Road subdivision. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, now we go into our final plat determinations, and there's four of those.
This is a request for final plat determination. The project is the Reserve at Tuscarora, section one, lots one through two, nine, 20 through 37, and 41 through 45. The file number is 2304-136. The developer is Panhandle Homes. The engineer is Fox and Associates. It's located in the Arden District, map two, parcels 4.3 and 7. This site is located along the north side of Tuscarora Pike, approximately a half a mile west of Interstate 81. The developer is proposing 26 single-family lots on approximately 44 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On June 22, 2023, county engineer Doug Smith found the project compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2009. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the August 21, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Tony, you want to represent... There you go. Jump right up there in the front seat, didn't you?
Yes, I will. Good evening. Steve Sianovich, Fox and Associates, representing the project and the applicant.
Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Sianovich or of the staff? This is in the Tuscarora-zoned area. We've had a lot of controversy over it, but it is now moving along in accordance to the Tuscarora zoning.
That is correct.
There are no questions. I make a motion we accept staff recommendations for final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the August 21, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff to accept staff recommendation, and that is to schedule a public hearing on August 21 for consideration of the final plat approval. Any questions? No questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is section two of the same subdivision.
Yes, this is a request for final plat determination. The project is the Reserve at Tuscarora, section two, lots three through eight, 10 through 19, and 38 through 40. The file number is 2304-137. The developer is Panhandle Homes. The engineer is Fox and Associates. It's located in the Arden District, map two, parcels 4.3 and 7. This site is located along the north side of Tuscarora Pike, approximately a half mile west of Interstate 81. The developer is proposing 19 single-family lots on 29.54 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On June 22, 2023, county engineer Doug Smith found the project compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2009. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the August 21, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Sianovich.
Steve Sianovich, Fox and Associates, representing the project.
Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Sianovich or the staff?
Hearing now, ma'am, make motion we accept staff recommendation, final plat determination, advertise for a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the August 21, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
I have a motion, Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to conduct a public hearing on August 21, at which time a final plat approval can be given. Is there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You got it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. The next project is South Brook, section two, phase one.
Excuse me, yes. This is a request for final plat determination. The project is South Brook, section two, phase one, lots 160 through 185, and townhouses 92 through 129. The file number is 2304-138. The developer is Chandler's Glen LLC. The engineer is Gordon. It's located in the Mill Creek District, map three, parcel nine. The property is located on Shiley Road, approximately 0.3 miles north of Hatchery Road. This phase proposes 26 single-family lots and 38 townhouse lots on approximately 14.8 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On May 23, 2023, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2009. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the August 21, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
Do we have anyone to represent Chandler's Glen?
Good evening. I'm John Eisenhower with Integrity Federal Services.
I'm Wilson with Chandler Glen LLC.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of the applicant or his representative or of the staff?
Hearing now, ma'am, make motion we accept staff recommendation, the final plat determination, advertise public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at August 21, 2023.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, and second by Mr. Goff. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next item is Communities of Burwell, phase eight.
Yes, this is a request for final plat determination. The project is Communities of Burwell, phase eight, lots E2 through E10, D9 through D24, and G22. The file number is 2112-42. The developer is Burwell Properties LLC. The surveyor is Robert Land Surveying. It's located in the Falling Waters District, map 13, parcel 10.4. The site is located on Knight Town Road, approximately one mile from its intersection with Weaver Lane. This phase proposes 26 single-family lots on 9.8 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers have been requested for this section. On July 12, 2023, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2009. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the August 21, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening. Mike Roberts, representing the project.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Roberts or of the staff?
So, Mike, that's a typically had been a townhome community, is that correct?
It's a mixed use. There's actually a large contingent of single-family homes that hasn't been developed, but this is the next phase of single-family development. There's actually a multifamily component to the project. There's really a TDP at one time, planning and development. That's for future...
I know there's still a lot of land there to develop in the future, that's for sure.
At what point do they reach where they will actually work on the entrance going into there? I think it's supposed to be a boulevard entrance. Right now, it's just one side.
They're almost ready to trip that. 178 units is what DOH had to be, I believe, I recall. He's very close to 200, because there is a second entrance out onto Rock Drive proper up by the cemetery, the old Slade's. That entrance has to get in when he gets to the 201. There is supposed to be a left turn lane dedicated to boy in downtown at the boulevard entrance, so that boulevard entrance is supposed to be finished. We have brought that up with the developer in the last couple...
I just know that when school's in session, that area gets rather congested.
Right. The school let stops in the middle of that turn, and you've got... It's just a, it's a nightmare. Any bus needs to be inside that subdivision to stop. The parents all drive out, obviously. So, now you've got parents trying to turn green, kids trying to get out of the car, run through the bus. Somebody, somewhere's here. Yeah, I see it every day, but nevertheless, that's what we're trying to get to with this, but I could not force anything just yet, but it's coming.
Thanks. I will add, on the survey side, turn lanes that Kelly's mentioned have been staked out in the field. The second entrance has also been staked in the field, so the developer is moving towards installing them.
Okay.
How many homes are there? One... Yeah, 140 something.
We did, we did the math literally like two months ago.
We did, I did through every plat, and we reviewed this, and we filled all the old DOH numbers, because there was some disagreement with the developer as to when what happened later. But I do have all that, we got all that has been laid out in the DAs, we only could follow the production detail. We are... Yeah, I mean, they, it's 160, it's an odd building that DOH has in there. It's like 178 is best, I can tell you. And then things begin to trip out there when they have to. That turn lane has to get into the boulevard entrance. The boulevard entrance should have already been done. There was no reason why. There was no relief given, as the developer said, that DOH, that relief, DOH never gave anybody any relief. That was just, for some reason, wasn't done. The second entrance out to Rock, here by the cemetery, that, that, we can't really force that to be done until 200 years, which is in the open state. So, that's where they are. They're very close. But the next, there is space handled, the books all read. I would love to see it go before 240. They haven't tripped that number over the DOH. DOH was right the number over, that's his, that's what I got to follow.
Any further questions? I'm ready for a motion.
Ma'am, make a motion we accept staff recommendation, final plat determination, advertise public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at August 21 meeting.
I have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Lewis to accept staff recommendation, and that is to conduct a public hearing on August 21, at which time final plat will be considered. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Middle Creek Vista's, and this is a tabled item, so I need a motion to untable. I have a motion, Mr. Goff, to untable.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the project is untabled. Do we have anybody to represent the project?
I'm Todd Heck with Morris Ritchie Associates.
Okay, Monique, you want to read the project? Well, it was a tabled item, so we need to untable it and, and get everything within the right timeframe here.
Okay. So, we have a request for final plat approval. The project is Middle Creek Vista's, phase one, section two, lots six through nine, and 37 through 40. File number is 2206-154. The developer is Warfield Homes Incorporated. The engineer is Morris and Ritchie Associates Incorporated. It's located in the Mill Creek District, map 21A, parcel 106. This project is located approximately 2,500 feet south of its intersection of Sailor's Way and Strobridge Road, with Middle Creek running through the middle of the site. The developer is proposing eight single-family lots on approximately 1.76 acres to be served by public water and sewer. Final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat approval, contention upon receipt of surety in the amount of $172,666.50. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety and signed developer's agreement.
Okay, this project was tabled at our last meeting because there was no one here to answer any questions, and Mr. Heck, you're going to do that this evening?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Legel, do we need to ask for public comments again?
There wasn't, it was supposed to be a public hearing this time, so...
Okay. All right, so then it would be the Planning Commission asking the questions, if they can remember what they were. You did have them in the minutes.
Some of the comments were about Sailor's Way, the speed limit on that road, and being very narrow. It's gravelled, I think that I remember that correctly. And, you know, to get back to where these houses are being built, you have to go through that gravelled area, and the folks that live along that gravel area are getting dust, traffic going pretty fast going through there, not slowing down. They felt that a lot of it was the construction.
That wouldn't make sense. I mean, we're hoping, like, the original flat had 10, 10 units. This class makes it to 18, eight, so I don't think there's a ton of traffic, probably is construction traffic causing the dust issue.
So, is that, do we determine whether that was state-maintained or not?
So, it's a orphan road, but DOH gave them an entrance permit off of, shoot, what is it, 511 to Sailor's Way, which is a very odd circumstance, but nobody was maintaining it, and then the developer maintained it up to their right of way. I think they wanted, DOH wanted like hardship, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, for recalling all that. Planning Commission members, do you have additional questions or comments that you want to make?
So, is he gonna, I'm like, is that gonna be up to Warfield Homes to maintain that while they're still constructing?
That would be a DOH question. Their entrance permit was pretty big, but if DOH gave them an entrance permit onto Sailor's Way, then I would assume that DOH would require any type of, I guess, upgrade in the future, but it'd be the same as any other road upgrade that any other development had.
And I think we determined that was not a posted speed limit on that road, if I remember correct?
Well, they were kind of seeing these as 350s, probably, I think, so...
All right. Planning Commission members, do you have additional questions or comments?
I'm prepared to make the motion, ma'am, but before I do this, I would like, I would like for the developer to see what they can do about slowing the traffic down for that neighborhood. I mean, they are your folks that you, that you employ, I would think, correct?
Well, they're our client.
Yeah. If you, if you could just say, look, we have some complaints about traffic and the dust, just to try to be a better neighbor as you, as they go to and from work.
Sure, we can...
I'm sure if that can be accomplished, they'd appreciate that. Other than that, I'm prepared to make the motion, ma'am...
All righty.
...to accept staff recommendation for the final plat approval, contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $172,666.50. The plat to be released upon receipt of surety.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Goff... The motion of Mr. Gokunhour, second of Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant final plat approval, contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars and fifty cents. Are there any additional questions?
I think the gentleman may have something.
I have forty-nine seventy. Anyway, I'm Danny Barr, one-four-three, Anchor Drive, in Wood, West Virginia, two-five-four-two-eight. I have forty-nine signatures here that people live in the neighborhood, you know, no further construction of the Middle Creek Vista. So you want to give this to the lady with the hammer?
Well, let's ask our legal counsel if it has any validity in.
This is final plat approval, so. I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing in our, in the state code, or, and we don't have zoning in this county, so no method that the, or Planning Commission should say can't build anything else in this spot. This is basically, I don't even need to, 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 no, there's no legal way that you can, so you can't do it.
Even with everybody opposing it, isn't it in the neighborhood?
Yeah, it's, because they, I mean, whoever this is owns that property, they bought that property. They have the right to develop it.
Well, yeah, they don't own it yet, the law's still.
Well, okay, well, whoever owns, this, this is to create the lot subject to this. There's no legal mechanism to say, I mean, you can have the lot plot planned, but not for.
Nothing, so nothing to be done, it's a fair, so.
Why don't you, why, Mr. Barr, why don't you give it to the, to Mr. Heck, just so he has it for record?
Yeah. Thank you. Money was giving butts. Girlfriend's him, five-acre drive, in Wood, West Virginia.
What's the purpose of your?
I have all these violations that have never been taken care of.
Is that regarding this project?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, we closed the public hearing. You weren't here for the public hearing?
I was here last month, but no one was here.
A couple weeks later, yeah.
Did we take any public comments then?
Well, when it got canceled on the third and everything got pushed to today, but the public hearing was closed at the end of January.
Okay, so, Mr. Legal, can we go ahead and allow this gentleman to speak?
I mean, you can allow him to speak, because the public hearing is closed.
Right. Okay, all right, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. I have water coming down on my property because they have raised up the development so high that it's right, I'm on a five-acre drive, I'm right behind their development, and when it rains, it floods my place to no end. It's ruining over acre of my property. I have talked to Mr. Cumley, he was the man that was doing everything as far as the water thing and stuff, and I have all his things of what he has said. I have taken pictures of everything that has been messed up while it's going on, and when it rains, it floods. It, it used to have just a little trinkle, now it's going to up to eight foot wide. Yeah, and then Mr. Warfield, he went ahead and he put no trespassing signs on my trees because he knows he didn't have any because he tore them all down.
Okay.
So me and him's having an issue, I guess.
So Mr. Warfield has not came and approached us after a letter was sent and vote votes were made.
Okay.
And the silver fence that they were supposed to put up, it's down, they don't want to put it back up because then that shows how bad the water floods my land.
Okay.
But he has videos of everything up there.
Mr. Heck, are you aware of any of this?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I think he's talking about complaints through the.
Stormwater inspections.
You have the stormwater inspector said that there's complaints that, to Warfield, he never has control of the property at this time, they shut them in.
What's the date on those inspections?
I can't switch it. That smoke's got my eyes and my stuff.
Twenty-twenty-one.
Good.
There's probably been a new inspection since then, so.
They may have cleared their violations, I don't really have to go back.
What's that due for, probably?
That's more than what's been coming to us.
Unfortunately, unless, unless we can see that there is an issue with something they have missed or, if this becomes, and if there's some of the control, if it floods, it just becomes a civil litigation between you and them.
That's the only way that I can get a fair.
Can you contact?
I will certainly follow up first, and you're bored.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And see where everything is. Todd, what I would suggest is that you look at your design at this point of release, and properly, whether to ensure that the post-developed two and ten-year discharge rates are in fact below the pre-developed two and ten-year discharge rates for that exact spot.
It's not just that, all, all of their trash is coming right down on my property, I'll have to go out there and pick it up every other day.
Well, the stormwater management inspections, we pick those things up, we'll look at.
Galen Butt.
Galen Butt?
Yeah. We've addressed this many times, and no one has done anything.
Who have you addressed it with?
Mr. Warfield knows, and who, by the way, the guy, who's the guy that?
Mr. Cumley.
Mr. Cumley. I gave him all of our videos, he has everything.
And Warfield Homes was called, in Washington, Virginia, to direct to them about the issue. When he found out it was us, he had my voice.
Can, can staff contact?
We will, we will look at the.
Stormwater folks and then get back.
You could look at it from your end, I mean, we'll.
But we need to communicate back to, to our, to the neighbors.
If you give me your names and address, I'll email, I can get some of that.
Sorry, the city, you have that guy, he has everything.
Dave doesn't work there anymore.
Oh, I figured that.
He actually works for the permitting and inspection office at the MS four office. It's, it's at Lawrence.
Another guy coming out, that too.
And Dave Gilmeier, so that's who would be at there, right?
Yeah, Bill, he's came out and he's seen it, went after it, brings out, looks like that, and then he said it didn't matter about the fence, he wasn't worried about it.
Well, the silver fence is looking to stop it.
No, no, it's definitely, it just shows how much, how bad it is.
The silver fence is just there.
It'll block it and make it really flow.
We'll pull the latest inspection reports, they say.
The trash is coming on my property, too.
Okay, sounds like there's an issue out there, Planning Commission members. I have a motion on the floor of Mr. Gokunhour, and second of Mr. Goff, do you want to continue with that, or do you want to rescind it and make another motion?
I'm fine, I'm fine with the motion, but, but I would like for staff to be able to reach out to stormwater and the, the developer and get back with the neighbors.
So you want to include that in your motion?
Sure.
Okay.
As far as the traffic, it is terrible. The new people are in there are flying like they're in tomorrow. I mean, never getting that we've lived there for forty-five years, and now it's just like we ain't done.
It's not a very pleasant experience, I'm sure. Okay, I have a motion on the floor, and Mr. Gokunhour chooses to keep it. Mr. Goff, you want to keep your second on that? Okay, we would ask that the staff reach out to the MS four people tomorrow, and then let Mr. Butts know, and include Mr. Heck in that, so everybody knows what's going on. There's contention out there, and it's just not a good environment, so.
Thank you.
With all that being said, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? No further questions, the motion passes. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is staff council discussion, motion, action, or anything. Do you have anything, Mr. Legal?
We have, we had a public hearing with the subdivision ordinance, societal comments that we're, we have in possession, I guess, we're just gonna see what the County Commission wants to say. I think as far as that part of it is, this body's done with that, it's whether we, how we incorporate and talk about those, and what the needs have as well as other.
Okay, for clarification, the comments that were made at the county council, or the county commission's public hearing, it's up to the county commission to decide whether those comments will be incorporated into the ordinance, is that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Like, this body did its job by saying, we're fine with this to the point where we can pass it on to the County Commission, because they make all the decisions.
Yeah, okay. I did attend the six o'clock meeting, and the thing that kind of caught my ear was the school board study, and I know that's been a sore subject when we have public hearings with schools being overcrowded, so I'm assuming that if the county commission is aware of all the comments, that they will say yea or nay on what to address and what not to address, is that?
Yeah, they had submitted a formula.
Yeah.
They had recommended a formula, and after speaking with staff, you know, there's still may need to be a happy medium found there for that formula, because it appears that it might be a little heavy.
Oh, really?
Perhaps.
Yeah, yeah. I never quite understood how they get three and a half kids, but that's, same like the parking spaces, I don't know how you get three and a half parking space.
You're just using a news to facilitate those.
I know.
It is a little heavy, but it's dodging.
Well, it's heavy because it's, the last time that it was updated was oh-four.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you go look at some places, the numbers, like, their numbers that they did give us are hard on our attention.
I didn't think they were either.
I mean, you know, so.
It's double what we do now.
We have to write that in, we never, we have the old stuff that was in here that we left, for lack of, we could get, we could get, we had a jar, we weren't going to put anything in about the, put a quote, per square foot sort of deal, to complete your structure, you were just gonna put it back to the developments of the sketch plate, and then some three stages, to provide those numbers with that signal that we'll hand over to the school board and then, I mean, I think one of the most interesting things, which was a little bit different for us, was what they really say in there is, the urban areas, I E. Barnes area is really, 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 say, will begin to shrink, and the big push or the big, how do you put it?
The influx is out like ninety-one, Cardinal Point, rural areas.
Well, the influx of children, zero to five, is going to come from the rural areas, where we don't have to develop, that's, so.
What's the newer stuff with the?
Yeah, and that's where they're looking to push out the new schools, new placement thing, so it's a little bit different paradigm.
And that timeline was twenty-thirty, if my memory is.
Right, that's correct.
And our, our piece would be merely just data for them.
Yeah.
Because ultimately, so I've messed around with like a Excel sheet, and basically all the applicant would have to do is type in how many units per type of dwelling are they proposing, and then that will shoot out how many students are proposed, and then they need to get the current enrollment for those schools, and then the max occupancy for those schools, and we'll have a differential between occupancy and actual enrollment, and that's for the school board's knowledge, so, that's really all that we would be doing, is just collecting that data for them.
Well, and that's what we should be doing.
Yeah, I mean, the one that we have now is just kind of old, like, fill in the blanks, and.
Yeah, right, right.
It just makes it easier.
Well, you know, as we sit here as a board and conduct public hearings, and we hear people coming from the various rural areas where classrooms are at their peak, with auxiliary buildings being already full, and there's another six hundred subdivision lot, that's a tough, that's a tough thing to, that's a tough thing to, to listen to, and knowing that we may or we may not be providing the school board with the proper information. Hopefully now we can get them the right information so that they know, and if they don't do anything, then that's not on us.
Well, I think the difference is now they want it.
Yeah.
So, like, since we opened that dialogue, the numbers, that's their numbers, they pay someone out in Missouri to calculate that number, and if that's what they want to go by, that's what they want to go by.
Yeah, for at least five years, or maybe longer, we were told that the school board didn't want any of our development information.
And they had their own.
They had their own data.
Yeah, yeah.
The biggest thing is, if not that, communication, it's like, we're not getting the days. It is very difficult to communicate with the laywomens, they talked about qualifications, and I can decide the subdivisions for the buses, and I tried to be, you know, cul-de-sac diavers, and their parking, to, you know, encourage buses to, you know, when I mean, be able to pick the kids up, versus, they wanted bus shelters, we were, you know, we kind of put some details together, you know, but, you know, crickets, and, yeah, well, is this what you guys wanted, and they did crickets?
All right, well, you know what was said at the public hearings, you have the public's comment, county council will direct staff to make any changes, right?
Correct.
All right.
Well, you know, we had to make some changes.
Yes, we do know.
Three years, they did cover that.
And that was the purpose, and that was the purpose of having the public hearing, too. All right, if there's nothing else, I'm ready for a motion.
No, to adjourn.
Motion of Mr. Goff to adjourn, second of Mr. Truitt at seven forty-seven. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor?